All right, I'm gonna call to order the meeting of the Arlington ISD Board of Trustees on February 6th, beginning at 5:09 PM. The first item on tonight's meeting is a, agenda is a district priority update. Marketing engagement, a comprehensive marketing plan. Introducing tonight's workshop is Dr. Smith.
Well, have Anita come up and get us rolling? As you all know, we've talked quite a bit about this, and this is an opportunity for input from our Board of Trustees, sitting in side by side with some of our communications professionals, to be able to have some good dialogue about what we want to see in a comprehensive marketing plan coming up. So Anita and team are gonna lead us through some great conversation tonight.
Thank you. I just wanna say thank you all for the opportunity to brainstorm with you, to help refine and fine and shape and sift and sort and prioritize what you wanna see in our marketing and communications efforts. I do have some members of our team with me tonight. Not all members of my team are public facing, so some of them you might have never seen before or talked to. So I'm gonna start here with Kendall Nigger, who's our communications specialist, one of the newer members of our team, and about a year and a half now with Kendall. We have Suzanne Turner here at our back table. Suzanne is our senior graphic artist, has been here going on six years this year. We have, let's see, here on the back table, hope for your hand, Dorcas. This is Dorcas Amorio. She is our team's administrative assistant and our department translator. And then we have our newest acquisition, Will Hartop. We have Brian Stack here with a combined role with us, with marketing, digital marketing strategies and web services. So that's our team that's here tonight. We have many other members of our team that work around the clock to make sure that we keep our marketing and communications efforts as strong as possible. So with that said, I'm gonna talk through our objectives tonight. Look over here. So looking at what we want our objectives to be for this group tonight, and that is to have that conversation with you in collaboration with a lot of other teams that we've already talked to or who we're talking to, so that we can define and align that marketing strategy. We've got an agenda set for you tonight. It's gonna involve a lot of brainstorming, group conversation, creative thinking together, so that we can inspire as many ideas in the short time that we have together as possible. So what we'll do tonight, well first, we'll set the stage, then we'll talk through what is great marketing. We'll align priorities according to your group. We will look at what's working and what's missing, and then we'll end with a focus exercise tonight, and we'll creatively, we'll come together and write a focus statement on our marketing efforts here in Arlington ISD. And then we will close out, so people can get ready and go on to your next meeting or onto home, whatever works best for you tonight. So with that said, we'll go ahead and set the stage here for tonight. As I've mentioned, this is one conversation, but it's not the only conversation that we'll have with the members of the people in this room tonight. We're here to brainstorm and then think through some areas that we wanna focus on, but there'll be other opportunities through a national partner that we're working with. They're called INSPIRE, the National Schools Public Relations Association. They are a body that helps school districts evaluate communications and marketing efforts, and they help us by conducting a survey. And if I asked for a show of hands, I would bet 100% of you have received a survey from INSPIRE either yesterday or Monday. Those are all out. So the survey has gone to all of our parents, to all of our employees in the district, and to all of our community stakeholders that have a vested interest, whether they have kids in our school districts or not. So that survey is out. It's been out since Monday, Friday afternoon, Friday afternoon, first round then, then Monday, then Wednesday. All surveys are out now. So far, we're at about 1,200 responses on our survey. So we have hit INSPIRE's goal for district participation. We have met INSPIRE's goal for parent participation, and we have some participation from the community. But INSPIRE shares with us that 100% of school districts miss the community goal. So we should not be alarmed. They do say we have higher participation than most in our community. We'll see where that ends up when the survey closes on the 14th. That's in motion. That's one part of it. A second part that's happening is very robust behind the curtain, and it's an audit. So we have shared with the INSPIRE team all of our materials. That's everything from advertising campaigns, magazine covers, billboards, postcards, posters, digital ads. They have access to the back office of all of our analytics, so they can go in and look at how our website is performing, how digital content is performing, and tell us, is this what is successful? Are we seeing success, and where can we improve in those strategies? When I say they have hundreds of pieces of material to evaluate, they have hundreds of pieces of material to evaluate that we have provided them. That audit will take up to six weeks before we receive a review back, and they'll give us some recommendations on how we can use their feedback to improve our effort. That's the second piece. The third piece is focus groups. You all are gonna be receiving invitations early next week, if not sooner, but probably not sooner, next week to participate. The focus groups are on February 24th, 25th, and 26th. There will be for board members, you'll have 30-minute time slots, three persons, three persons, two persons, to meet with a member of the audit team and have your discussion. The other groups will be one hour for English-speaking focus groups and an hour and a half for Spanish-speaking focus groups. So those are gonna be taking place the last week in February, and we have 20 focus groups that we've scheduled. There will be between eight to 12 people per focus group, so that they can really dig in to conversation. They will use the survey data to inform the questions to dig deeper into your focus group meetings. So that will be happening as well. So there's a lot going on, all at the same time, but again, this is not only opportunity for participation. And then for tonight, our specific goal for this group is to work in our table groups. We wanna gather input, we wanna set priorities, and we wanna help starting to shape that shared vision for our team. So, any questions about that before we jump in? Okay, are they ready to brainstorm? All right, great. So let's start with a very, very big question. What is great marketing? I don't know if I can follow, I need to answer to every one of you. So my team was very kind. The facilitators from this, my staff, in particular, and Michael Hill here at this table, will give you a worksheet, and that has some prompts on it. This week I would like to helpful to have a few questions help guide your conversation. On your table, you've got some post-it notes. So we'd like you to think about this question, what is great marketing to you? To think about some examples of great marketing that you've seen, technically corporate, maybe your favorite nonprofit, whatever it is. What's a great example of marketing to you? And then the last piece of that is what made that memorable or impressionable to you? So you don't have to understand how marketing works, but you know how it makes you feel. So y'all, on your post-it notes, just jot down different companies or brands that you've been inspired by, and talk about why. The timekeepers at your table will help you keep time, and then we'll help you come back together and pick two from your group that you wanna share with the rest of the group about a company that or a brand that exemplifies great marketing, and why. Okay? Any questions? All right. Ready, Seco?
So we're just giving examples?
We're on the sticky notes now.
Oh, okay.
I think I passed it out.
See, it's memorable.
Where's the beef?
Oh, yeah.
The primary organizations have spent as much or more on the marketing department than they do on a lot of other departments and senior organizations. I'm just thinking like outside of probably schools. I don't think we're supposed to fill this out yet.
Two, three examples?
Yeah.
Aren't we supposed to write how we write it out?
What does it look like? Share examples. What made those examples impactful?
Oh, those two.
Discuss at your table, write two to three examples, sticky notes to share. Two minutes.
I bear in mind, based off of feeling, like it leaves you feeling a certain way. Like the Gatorade commercial, and Michael Jordan, I wanna be like Mike. We bought Gatorade, because it's like, it's Michael Jordan, and you sing the song. The Mentos commercial, weird situations that people get put in, but it's always something where if something happens, and because they popped that Mentos, it all works out.
Yeah.
Mentos doesn't do that for you, it just... And then the where's the beef with the lady? I think this is back in the eighties. But where's the beef? You just wanted to get the wind in. So for me, I think something effective is, it makes you feel a certain way about that product. You know, regardless of the statement is good, you feel that way.
There was a tagline that a car dealership had, a certain car brand, I remember. Toyota had something way back when, where it's like... Do you remember what it was?
I remember Mazda had Zunez.
What was Toyota? When you said car dealer, I thought of Clay Cooley. Shot me first, shot me last, either way, it comes to Clay.
I didn't see that.
Clay Cooley, yeah.
Catchy girl. Have you seen the J.G. Wentworth?
Yeah, oh, yeah.
And what's the other guy named?
The Hammer? Like they all make it something catchy, and it makes you feel a certain way.
You wanna share one out, or one or two out, when we go in the group?
I mean, I can share one, Ron. I think everyone, you've either seen the Michael Jordan commercials, but I think everyone's seen the Mentos. But it's about how you feel.
So we're supposed to, we're still not supposed to write?
No, not on, not yet. I think we're just talking on the sticky notes now.
I'll give you a full script, so you just read the script.
Okay, so let's go around and share out a couple of... So let's go around and share out a couple of thoughts from this example from each table. Dorcas, why don't we start with your group, who's gonna facilitate from here?
Okay, they're tagging me, so I guess...
Looks like Steven.
Go sports ball. Okay, so we talked about the fact, we said that with marketing that's memorable, that evokes a feeling, real stories about real people in our system. Well, real stories, that's like one that we admire, or things that we think is good marketing. And then on the other side, in terms of examples, when we thought about our own context marketing, that includes not stock things, but things that are actually real stories with our students and our teachers and our facilities, those two components.
All right. What about this group here?
We talked about how if you distill, great marketing encompasses a lot, but when you distill it down to one thing, it should be to create raving fans for your product, or in this case, our district. And a good example of that is Chick-fil-A. We're all raving fan, most, I think most of us in here are raving fans about Chick-fil-A. And it, you know, the marketing, it's from the branding, it's from the advertising. They use a comprehensive marketing strategy that also includes their corporate culture. So that's part of the mystique that attracts us to the brand, is their corporate culture. You know, that's a board priority that we have, creating great student experiences. And we want our parents and students to be raving fans of the experience they experience in each and every classroom.
All right, what about this group here?
I think for ours, it's along the same lines of telling a story, but making you feel a certain way about the product. Some examples that I put forward, if you've ever seen the Gatorade commercials with Michael Jordan, or I Wanna Be Like Mike, or the Mentos commercial, where any bad situation, like something good happens, or back in the eighties, where's the beef with Wendy's? Right? And so they're examples where they're memorable, and they make you feel a certain way. And, you know, we've got, what, 76 campuses that are very memorable, and can make each portion of the city feel a certain way. So, tell a story.
Absolutely. What about this group?
Okay, so we, all of the above, that's really good. We also talked about effective marketing will reach the goal. It will help us reach the goal of the organization. So for example, if our goal is to bring some of the leavers back to increase enrollment, and to capture our students, bring them back into our system, we would market for that, just a strategy to reach that goal. We also talked about how communications is different than marketing. Communications might be communication coming from Superintendent Smith to staff. Anything district level that gets communicated to media outlets, parents, staff, that counts as communication, but not necessarily marketing.
And our last group.
So effective marketing, similar to what everyone else has said, we talked about it having a personal draw, that it's thought provoking, it leads you kinda going back and thinking about what you saw, and that it resonates with you and things that you're passionate about. Companies that have marketing that we talked about, Nike, Dove, and Apple, we resonate with all of those. And then, as far as effective communication, right info at the right time.
All right. Let's go into our second exercise, which is going to be identifying priorities. Your facilitator at the table will give you a list of areas that we work in. And with anything, there's always a bunch of areas. So we want you to think about that as a group, and prioritize what you think are top three areas that communications and marketing should be focused in. So we'll let you work together as your groups, and then select a spokesperson to share out your top three priorities after our discussion. So that was our time on the panel. Six minutes. All right, we have six minutes for your discussion.
Like what are priorities should be?
Oh, thank you.
I think for our marketing, we need concentration.
What's our objectives? And based on our... One of these might be the top... Something else. And that's where the marketing plan comes in, is it tells us, based on...
I feel like somebody was gonna go to... Because I mean, if you do good shit to creation, maybe push that out for advertising. Think about the crisis communications.
I'm pretty, for creative creation, average what? Increasing enrollment, advertising, or social media, or how to get that.
It depends on what our priorities are, Jeff, this is our...
Welcome, I'm Jennifer World every day. So, I was just going through, what do I think are the top ones? Because they all are... And those all get to this.
Yes, and the reason why I...
And then, how we pray, I don't think it's important.
Those all have to, to tell the story.
Okay, for number two, our...
Here, out here, we need to teach you some techniques, and use it for us, or it can be used against us, but it's gonna be...
Bring it. It is so...
Why don't you do social media?
Yeah, I agree that there's a point, it's a good one, that content creation is the what. Several of these are the... I think social media is important, I'm just saying. For me, branding, my social media, last week. If I had to pick three, I'm not sure. Content creation, social media.
It's time to start narrowing down your top three as others. Okay, are y'all ready to report out your top three? Who likes to go first? volunteer, it's a volunteer exercise.
Oh, Sarah raised her hand.
I feel like that was volunteer. All right, I'm sure this was not an easy exercise, but let's hear, kinda how y'all worked through this.
So we said number one is content creation, and we both said that that's what we heard other people saying around the room, was the idea of telling stories, and so that's what we had as our number one. Number two, we talked about social media, but then we were also saying that several others of these are similar kinds of strategies, just using web tools to attract people in. And then for number three, we said advertising.
Okay, all right. Would you like to go next group?
Yes. So, almost exactly the same. Content creation, that really we need to get at the heart of the stories here in our district, and develop those, and get them out there. Advertising as number two, and then social media as a platform to tell those stories.
All right, middle group.
Okay, so... So we kinda discussed much of the same, and it's kind of a challenge to try to boil all of this down, but we felt like content creation was the what. If you get good content, then the how you get that out is through the social media, the internal communications, and other things. And so, really putting a lot of emphasis on content creation. We also talked about advertising as being important, but internal communications, we've got 8,000 employees and 55,000 students that are, I would consider internal, and what a force multiplier that could be if they were our voices to get the message out. So, what did I miss?
Branding, branding.
Yes. Branding is kinda what grabs people. It gets them, you know, you got a good brand, a good look, or whatever. It gets them drawn in, but then you gotta have some great content once they get there to keep them. Branding is only good if you got content to...
Okay, Mr. Will, thanks, Darla.
Okay, we're gonna be contrarians and say that, which channel you pick depends on your objective. For instance, if we're going to try to attract more teachers, our marketing mix needs to reflect what's most effective to do that. If we want to increase enrollment by stealing families back from Grand Prairie, we wanna put billboards up and down 360. So not knowing what objectives we're doing in this campaign, it's a futile task to try to say which one of these is more important. Because they're all important, but which one we use in a comprehensive marketing strategy depends on our specific objectives of the marketing campaigns that we need to implement. So we need to know that first. So...
And our last group?
We picked, for number one, we picked branding, because branding is how you identify, you are seen, it's your colors, it's your logo. It is what represents you. So branding is number one for us. Number two is content creation. Number two is content creation because when you connect to people and you tell stories, that evokes a response and it's memorable. Number three is media relations because it is key to make sure that we are having the same message throughout everywhere, whoever we talk to. That teachers have the same message, students, and that is currently reflecting the culture shift that we want. We did a number four because we are rule breakers and we think that data-driven marketing makes all of that possible.
Frank just cheered a little bit. Well, y'all didn't see it without.
But you're welcome. Data-driven marketing will tell us, is our content creation working, is our branding on point, and is our media like? So data-driven is throughout all of that.
Okay. Good, great discussion. All right, you ready for our next opportunity to think through this question? What's working and what's missing? And this is targeted specifically for the Arlington ISD. So with all of our exercises, we gave some prompts and some worksheets to kind of help guide that conversation. So as a group, we want you to discuss and talk about what is something that you feel is working well with communications or marketing in our district? And then we have three opportunities to share how we can improve. So what do you feel is not being communicated effectively? What do you think we're missing? What are we overlooking? And what do you, would like, what would you like to see us do differently? So as a group, y'all discuss those and select a reporter to share out one finding from what's going well and one finding from what you would like to improve. How many minutes on this? Okay, so. Got six minutes to work on it and a couple of minutes to share out. So, yeah. So what?
I think we do.
So one of the things I think are working are the cues is that our leveraging the marketing communications provided to them. Maximize utilization of that campus. I was wondering what she was gonna say. Don't you think about the mass certification. Their. Your utilization. So the cases that are. Doing. Changing. Well, it, it was. Yeah, yeah. But, but that was. Because you're. I, I think that's, that's the kind of business going well is what they're, they're utilizing those tools effectively. I know, but. District, my campus. When I. You gotta tell the campus whether they're creating their own. This is all. They're creating their. Dr. Smith could. Brands.
I really enjoy. One, I was communicating. And we were really.
I think. And, and, and guidance to campuses. On how to use our creative assets along with how to effectively communicate. The weather closing was a good example. We had one campus who just screenshot it, an internal memo, and posted it on their webpage. And then others who has this really creative, effective graphic. And then. Was on the page. What page? They hit. But if that's the one of the problems.
Another thing.
That we're missing is that lack of. Training or resources.
We showcase different groups. And not our corporations unless they're. Too well with that.
Our assets.
I'll just say. Wire TV, that's it. Like, I'm not hearing celebration. I told me that I know I have things to do, but they're. I never. Everything. Or anything. So that, that is important.
This. I'm, I'm. I think this might be. That I put down. Substance.
Yeah.
When I say. Yeah. And then. So. But that just seems like way. It's leave, relax, and send it amazing. Vibe. Versus. We're wondering, think all the way down. And those are two things. So those are very different targets here. And that brand identity is you want people to go through.
Yeah.
With their strategic plan.
We didn't check it out.
And reinforces in the other.
I, similar, I said. I'm.
When I put those things in. I don't know, because people go, oh, I should go to that. To. So I think there is a larger. They have very different purposes.
We have that relationship. And that includes like. I believe that. That we. I feel. Again, it's for.
Go for it. Environmental.
For. Socialism.
Yeah.
And I.
Yeah.
Yes. Oh, yeah. Do you want to say a new?
Oh, the last.
Then you got it.
All right, what do you think?
Correct. I mean, I know that.
Sarah, what do you think about? Okay.
I think, I think our Facebook presence is pretty strong. Personally, like it's. It's got good content. Out there, a lot, there's a lot of people in the. Those assets. I think the bond communications we have, especially on the website. People want to find information on the bond. It's pretty detailed and it's incomprehensive. So. I think those.
Promote eyes. If I go to marketing. We do.
Uh, yeah. But that's all, that's still on my mind. We want to push. I think that's. I think. Because I, when social media.
And.
That's the thing that I have. I think we need.
People got more stories. People.
I put our prices on. Maybe that's part of them so we're close to. But it's. Unfortunately, so.
I think that's, that's part of the challenge. I think the second thing is.
What's.
I don't like. We don't have compelling. And I think there's a lack of strategic. What we want to be. I think they're not.
That's the.
College.
Right, because you know, I, I, you know, just sometimes. Like if.
Like. They're high.
When I've seen, I think.
As you're.
There's nothing unique about it. It's stuff that. At the time, it's like literally.
One improvement.
True. They don't have a staff. You see their show.
Yes. Their lack of. But it's. And I think there was one thing. Right. Sorry. Because they're. The connection. Like. Right. Certainly.
Yeah. And I was.
Police.
We.
Protect.
She. So.
What audience are we possibly missing? Are we looking?
I feel like in general, non, non organized people, so folks with no kids and mainly. Maybe early. Either people who are about to have kids or young teenagers, not quite as fully educated, who've got a gathering there selling their stuff. Yeah. Um, and then just folks in the community who. And a lot of it. They had experienced the ASD at one time, but they don't know, they don't really know what to do now.
All right, are we ready to share? Um, from our table, anyone want to go first? Something that's going well, something you can improve on.
I'll go first. Okay. I think our bond communications is pretty strong, especially on our website. It's really detailed, comprehensive, a lot of data. If folks have questions about the bond, they're confident, they can, they can get it. Um, and then I think our Facebook page is pretty strong.
Okay, very good. Anything we can improve on?
Oh, we're rolling all the way through. Oh, okay. Um, we talked about how we can better sell our story and how we're a better, you know, we're a good option, we're better than some of the, some of our competitors in getting our story out there. Um, communications revolving around events, sometimes it seems to be a bigger events, maybe a little bit untimely. What audiences do we think we're missing or overlooking? Uh, folks maybe who are, you know, recently married folks, they don't have kids yet, or maybe they have really young kids and selling that, our story to them at that point where they're starting to think about choosing school specifically. And then members of the community who maybe had a connection to ASD at one point, but don't anymore. And then on some things to, to do differently in the future. Put down campus webpages and Facebook pages are, seem, seem kind of inconsistent from campus to campus. Some are updated really frequently and are active, and then some are not and are kind of just landing pages.
Okay. So who would like to go next with one positive and one thing to improve on? Volunteer?
Yeah.
Sure.
Um, okay, so what we feel is working well is that we do a really good job of celebrating our staff and our student at the mark. What was the next one? Do you want me to answer?
Yes, one, one thing that, out of the three areas, something.
Uh, not effective. Um. That we do not identify new ways to share our opportunities and various stories, that we stick to our old ways. And the example would be, um, when we have a new story, like when we did the pay raise that night as a board, that that is something we could have been shouting from the rooftops that very night. And instead, it took days and days to get anything. And when we did get something, it was a small graphic that just wasn't very impressive.
Okay, thanks for sharing. Who would like to go next? You guys?
Sure, I, I don't have a positive on mine, but I will say what we thought was missing is a lack of a comprehensive plan that is allowing our disreforms.
Thank you. All right. Sarah, your group?
Sure, the, the one word. Yes. Okay, um, we, we all agreed that our, um, media partnerships are some, sorry, are, are going strong and we leverage those partnerships to, um, to our advantage and it really all supports students. And something that we would like to, um, improve upon, targeting our young parents, um, to show them the stories, highlight what's unique about each campus, and make sure that everyone is aware of our special programs, our free pre-K, and the fact that we accept outside transfers in our district.
Perfect. All right, last table.
Yeah, okay. Um, what is, we, so we talked in different lenses than I feel like everyone else's table.
Good talk. Shocking.
Shocking.
Yeah, sorry, everybody. Um, so we discussed, um, communication strategies that are working well on campuses. So making sure that communication from administrators to parents is, has substance to it, that it's celebrating things happening on the campus from teachers to students, all of that, not just events, not just a blanket checkbox email app to parents. Um, what we need to work on, or what's working for marketing, what did we say for marketing? Um, that we have really good campaigns, um, like our pre-K campaign is amazing, but that it does not have the personal feel because we're using stuff with images. So throwing in our own kids, we give it a little added something to really kind of win people over.
All right, terrific. All right, we have one more brainstorm to go before we wrap it up, uh, for the next seven meetings. So this is a vision exercise. So your table facilitator, uh, will give you a scratch pad worksheet. So you can think about like crafting a mission statement, a vision statement, whatever resonates with you. A simple way of saying what your vision is for the marketing team. And I can tell you an example of when we work as a team, um, our statement is really simple. We believe Arlington ISD provides a world-class, uh, education with the opportunity for kids to explore. We don't plug in the blank, let's explore what? A world-class education with the freedom to explore. So what is your vision statement? What do you want to see? So y'all can work together or work independently and come together. We'll take about six minutes here, and then I'll have you share your vision statement, uh, how, just one per table with the group. Okay. Which word is it? It's okay. So we're right. Got any else?
I have to look at our current.
Yeah. That's not our. Just. Marketing. Was. That's part of the.
I was walking. To say something around it. The kids. The great students. And. So. Teachers. The key teachers.
Thoughts to consider is what should our marketing team say about us? What feeling and message should it convey? What do we want our community to know?
Right.
Right.
Right. Yeah.
I want. Be a. A part of something. Kind of part of something. I think that's.
Yes.
To me. That I've used.
Yeah.
Have eloquent statements. That's very. I feel like. Brings. To be. But no, that's all good. And I think the one. Listen, I think from our table that's talking about. Stories. So I feel like we, that kind of like wanting to stay part of the brand, my, I feel like the story. And I'm sure your story is, because we wrote it in for our. Our team. Highlighting your stories. And that's like. That was. And also.
You're learning that sounds like.
There you go.
Well, you're. That's.
I'm. Outside. I can.
And I, I don't know, you're, you might be able to help with some of this. Like a D's.
Friendly looking principal.
I, it's, I think. A lot of business. Part of something still.
J G B T. J G B T.
It has worked, right? Exactly. The story has to be like fair. They did. Questions. But it actually has to be a good.
I didn't.
Just making sure. Parents have. Marketing's job to make sure they.
Oh, no. I was. Yeah, absolutely. But this is like.
Yeah. Yeah.
And I mean, that's what. It means that's why I think. What was the.
That's.
What you remind us of, like every day, this is my.
True. You know, but I. Why I'm doing things.
And that's.
I think. Single. I think Darlene.
Mark. Right. Mark. So we're years ago. Waiting, ready.
There's none of this. I no longer tip over writing. Parents. Screw this. Screw this.
Okay. If you haven't crafted a statement, that's okay. If you've got some ideas or something.[1673.84]
And it's hard, it's hard for you to hold on.
If you haven't crafted a full statement, that's all right. This exercise is about visioning. So if you've got some key words that you would just like to share out, if you haven't crafted a full statement, that's okay to you. So just share the things that you think are important in visioning about marketing. So Liam, you want to start with your group?
Sure, okay. Our statement is storytelling that makes people feel like they are or want to be a part of something special. Oh, I like that.
Okay. Your group, dear?
We haven't completely crafted a statement. I've gathered a lot of the feelings that we want to convey, and it is a lot about the being recognizable individuals, campus successes, and kind of a community, mine, Arlington.
Yeah, okay, very good. This group?
I, uh, I.
What, are you writing? I don't want to know.
Non-coherent.
We have two lawyers at the same.
Lots of red, um, not coherent sentences. So I, I ended, we were, this is not a consensus, so I don't, Larry and, and Michael are not to blame for this. So I ended up with just three points. Um, I had our kids, their learning, achieving in a safe environment, our opportunities, they're very diverse, meeting kids' needs in high-quality settings, and our people are some of the best around.
Yes.
From this group.
Okay, ours is, our district is dedicated to fostering a supportive learning environment that inspires growth, opportunity, and community connection. Through transparent communication, we aim to build strong partnerships, celebrate successes, and increase student enrollment by positioning our schools as a home for lifelong learning.
That's what it means to say.
Overachiever.
I taught that.
We said, uh, the focus of our team should be creating raving fans so that parents make Arlington ISD their first choice.
Okay, terrific. Well done, everybody. So want to just reiterate, um, in our closing, what we'll be doing with all of this information. It was a lot in a very short amount of time. Not designed in that way, because we just wanted topical ideas. As we continue to build the district strategic marketing, I mean, strategic plan, then we will need to align our marketing to that vision, which we don't have yet. So our auditor is looking at what's important to us, so that they can make sure that is, is captured in our future, to make sure that what you want in this group is captured in what we create in the draft plan that we're going to share with you. So that's how we'll use your feedback. Again, this is not the only conversation, it's just one of many conversations that we'll have. So our next steps here are to triage all of this. The moderator at your table will collect our worksheets and post-it notes and all those different things, and we will get that over to Inspra for them to review for the audit as well. So with that, any questions before we wrap it up?
Okay.
Yes, Mr. Will?
So, uh, Inspra is a great organization in the PR realm. Who did we look at for this work outside of Inspra? I'm sure they're pretty, it sounds like they're pretty qualified for more than just PR. Did we look at any other firms that maybe had a broader view of marketing?
We didn't. Um, so we picked Inspra because what, uh, what the group wanted to accomplish was the survey, the focus groups, and the audit, and that would take probably six months to a year if we went out with a group that didn't already have experience with public education. So we picked them. This is a first step, it's certainly not the last step. I think they're going to give us very great feedback that we can use to implement a plan of how we want to shape that as we build the district. Great. Over and out. Thank you.
Before y'all go anywhere, before, before Justin closes you out, hold on. Just a, a quick reminder for our trustees, this is why the strategic planning items that we talked about in our last workshop on strategic planning are so important. If we do this well, we're marketing around the vision of the school district and what we want to become. And we've got to make sure that that strategic plan is strong, so that we can align all of our efforts there. And so as you're working and hearing these community feedback sessions on strategic planning and stuff, it's super important for us to get that part right, to be able to tell the story about what we want to become for the future, not what we've been in the past, but what we want to become for the future moving forward.
Okay. Thank you, Anita and team. At this time, we will recess and reconvene in the board chambers beginning at six oh two PM to close session pursuant to sections five five one point zero seven one through five five one point zero eight four and five five one point zero eight nine of the Texas Government Code in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act for the topic set forth on our agenda. Let's move to closing.